Good morning and welcome. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Time is ten oh one A.M. This time, I'd like to ask Representative Adam Jones III to do the invocation, please. Amen. Thank you, Representative Jones. Roll call, National Council Secretary, Alicia Strobel.
Speaker Randall Hicks.
Present.
Mary Crawford.
Present.
Joyce Steer.
Present.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Robert Huf.
Present.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Here.
William Low.
Here.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Present.
Darryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Travis Scott.
Here.
Lucian Tiger.
Present.
Speaker, you have fifteen present, one absent.
Fifteen present and one absent constitutes a quorum. All business conducted will be official. This time, I'd like to recognize our dignitaries that are present this morning. Please stand and be recognized after I call your name. We have Principal Chief David W. Hill. Second Chief Dale Beaver. We have former Second Chief Louis Hicks. Former National Council Speaker, Second Chief Roger Barnett. We also have our Muskogee Nation Princess Claudia McHenry. And our Junior Miss Muskogee Nation Princess Gabrielle Noriega. If I missed anyone, I do apologize. Now we are down to approval of minutes. Emergency session, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Emergency session, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Planning session, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Pre-agenda quarterly session, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Emergency session, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Speaker, make a motion to approve all minutes with any changes necessary.
Representative Low made a motion to approve the minutes with any corrections as needed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles Mc... Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Present.
Present.
Yes.
Yes.
James Jennings. James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion passes. Next item is Order of Business. NCR twenty-one zero one-two. A resolution of the Muskogee Creek National Council confirming Michael Kuhn to serve on the Cemetery Advisory Committee. Sponsored Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall made a motion to adopt NCR twenty-one zero one-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Tiger. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes. Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCR twenty-one zero one-four. A resolution of the Muskogee Creek National Council approving the legal service agreement between the Muskogee Creek National Council and Fletcher Law P L L C. Sponsors William Low.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt a revised agreement.
Second.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCR, or revised agreement with NCR twenty-one zero one-four, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
No.
Travis Scott.
No.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Speaker, you have twelve in favor, two against.
Twelve in favor, two against. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-five-eight. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation to uphold and enforce the official name and seal of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsors Adam Jones III.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jones made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-five-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-six-one. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a certain agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health and Tier Point LLC on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors James Jennings.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-six-one. Do I have a second? Second by Representative Tiger. Discussion. Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-six-two. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the nomination of Lysinda Myers to serve on the Muskogee Creek Nation Election Board. Sponsors Anna Marshall. Co-sponsor Lucian Tiger III.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-six-two.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Tiger. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Ms. Myers, if you would, stand and be recognized. My apologies, Mr. Kuhn. Will you also stand and be recognized for your confirmation of cemetery board? Thank you, sir. T R twenty-one one-six-five. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving extension of the Management Agreement between Roos Hospitality Group, Inc. and the Gaming Operations Authority Board, G O A B. Sponsors Patrick Freeman, Jr.
Make a motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-six-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Jones. Discussion.
Speaker, Lucian.
Representative Tiger.
I'd like to make a motion going to executive session.
Representative Tiger made a motion going to the executive session. Do I have a second? Second by Representative Huff. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
No.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have thirteen in favor, one against.
Thirteen in favor, one against. We are in executive session at ten eleven. Representative Tiger, who all would you like to remain in the building? Or the...
Chief, Second Chief, Attorney General Wiley.
Okay, we are out of executive some, uh, session. Just a brief summary. Discussion was made concerning the legislation. No vote or action was taken. And back to the motion on the floor. Motion to adopt was made by Representative Freeman, seconded by Jones. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-six-eight. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the construction of a new public education lecture hall for the College of the Muskogee Nation. Sponsors James Jennings.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-six-eight.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Huff. Discussion. Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-six-nine. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute an agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation and the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-six-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Yohola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-seven-zero. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the nomination of Roger Wiley to serve as the Chief Judge of the District Trial Court of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsors Adam Jones III.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jones made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-seven-zero.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Huff. Discussion.
Speaker, Lucian.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, no objections from the sponsor. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Yes.
Representative Tiger will be added as co-sponsor, same as James Jennings, Representative Huff, Representative Hicks, Representative Deere, Representative Crawford, Representative Marshall, any others. Representative Proctor. All will be added as co-sponsors. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
No.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Speaker, you have thirteen in favor, one against.
Thirteen in favor, one against. That motion is adopted. Mr. Wiley, would you stand and be recognized, please? T R twenty-one one-seven-one. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing contract with McHale Tribal Construction LLC. Sponsors Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Yohola Osborne made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-seven-one.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Marshall. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-seven-two. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing contract with McHale Tribal Construction LLC. Sponsors Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Yohola Osborne made a motion to adopt T R one-seven-two. Seconded by, do I have a second? Representative Marshall. Any discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. T R twenty-one one-seven-three. A tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the extension of the Secretary of Nation and Commerce to continue operations of the One Fire Holding Company LLC. Sponsors Lucian Tiger III.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt T R twenty-one one-seven-three.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Huff. Discussion. Hearing none. Voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one-three-nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the District Attorney's Council for the benefit of the Family Violence Prevention Program. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-three-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Yohola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one-four-zero. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the U.S. Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women for the Benefit of the Family Violence Prevention Program. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-four-zero. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Yohola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one-four-one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the U.S. Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women for the Benefit of the Vi... of the Family Violence Prevention Program. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-four-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one-four-two. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the U.S. Department of Justice Coordinated Tribal Assistance Solicitation Pur... uh, Purpose Area Six Children's Justice Act Partnerships for Indian Communities Grant Funds for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Children and Family Services Administration. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-four-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Yohola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings. Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one-four-three. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the American Indian College Fund, Native Pathways College, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Higher Pathways Grant for the Benefit of Youth Services. Sponsors James Jennings.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-four-three. Do I have a second? Seconded by Representative Marshall. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks. Robert Huf.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one-four-four. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from a Project Echo Grant for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsors James Jennings.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-four-four, seconded by Representative Low. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one four-six. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the United States Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families. Children and Families for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Children and Family Services Administration. Sponsors Mary Crawford.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one-four-six, seconded by Representative Deere. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall. Thomas Senior Yohola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-four-seven. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending NCA twenty-one dash zero-nine-seven. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds received from the United States Department of Treasury for the Muskogee Creek Nation Citizen Vaccine Incentive. Sponsors William Low, co-sponsor Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-four-seven. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-four-eight. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of funds for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation's Youth Services Program for the twenty-twenty-one U.S. Department of Justice Coordinated Tribal Assistance Purpose Area Nine Grant. Sponsors Lucian Tiger III.
Motion to adopt, Speaker.
Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-four-eight. Seconded by Representative Marshall. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-four-nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the U.S. Department of Justice, twenty-twenty-one, OJJDP. Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One Delinquency Prevention Grants Program Funds for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Juvenile Justice Program. Sponsors Lucian Tiger III.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-four-nine. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings? Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-five-three. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of funds for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation's Light Horse Police Department for the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, twenty-twenty-one, COPS Office Tribal Resources Grant Program. Equipment and Training. Sponsors William Low.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-five-three. Seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles Mc... Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-five-four. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of funds for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation's Light Horse Police Department for the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, twenty-twenty-one, COPS Office Tribal Resources Grant Program Hiring. Sponsors William Low.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-five-four. Seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks? Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-five-five. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation repealing MCNCA Title Seventeen, Chapter Eight, Title Gaming Operations Authority Board. Sponsors Patrick Freeman Jr., co-sponsor Adam Jones III, Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-five-five.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion.
Speaker.
Representative Low.
What else, Speaker? I'd like to ask the sponsor to become a co-sponsor as well, please, sir.
Representative Freeman.
What else, Speaker?
Representative Low will be at his co-sponsor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-five-six. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving and authorizing the principal chief to execute and file articles of organization with the Office of Secretary of the Nation and Commerce to form Muskogee Nation Gaming Enterprises LLC under Muskogee Creek Nation Limited Liability Company Act and approving the operating agreement for Muskogee Nation Gaming Enterprises LLC. Sponsors Patrick Freeman Jr., co-sponsors Adam Jones III, Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-five-six. Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion.
Speaker Hicks.
Representative Low.
Yes, sir. I would like to become a co-sponsor for this bill as well, please, sir.
Representative Freeman.
Yes.
Add Will up as co-sponsor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-five-seven. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCNCA Title Thirty-seven, subsection two dash two oh three to alter the distribution of funds. Sponsors William Low.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-five-seven. Seconded by Representative Huff. Discussion. Representative Jennings.
Thank you, sir. I just have some comments about this. So, when I first got on the council a few years back, you know, we had approximately hundred million dollars in the permanent fund. And over the years, we have adjusted and have the distribution from twenty percent down to fifteen, giving five percent to the Department of Health or Contract Health to help us in that department. But I can't support this by taking away all the distribution from gaming to the permanent fund. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to make it ten percent. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion on the floor to amend it to ten percent. Do I have second? No second, then that motion fails.
Thank you, sir.
Back to the main motion. Is there any other discussion?
Question.
Representative Jones.
I'm B for a controller. Controller, if we did make that motion to ten percent, how would that affect it? Still yet?
Yes, that would lessen the time. It would make the time shorter. We would actually, we're using carryover to balance the budget now. So, it would make that carryover period shorter. Now, we do have a proposal, a spending proposal for the interest or for the earnings only portion of the permanent fund where it could have a positive impact. But absent a spending allocation from the permanent fund, that would be, that motion would be detrimental to the budget.
Thank you.
And Representative Jones. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Darnell. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
No.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have thirteen in favor, one against.
Thirteen in favor, one against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-five-eight. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving a continuing budget ordinance and providing for appropriations and authorization for expenditures for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Sponsors Robert Huff.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Huff made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, five-eight. Do I have a second? Seconded by Representative Tiger. Discussion.
Speaker.
Representative Tiger.
Thank you, Speaker. Mr. Darnell. Thank you, Mr. Darnell. Budget's passed through all three committees. When could you have the final numbers back to the council?
Once that's done, approximately a week. We do have several open issues with the programs, but once that has been accomplished, it'd be approximately a week.
So, with the budgets that have passed through all three committees, you send over the budget to be voted on, will take a week?
Yes.
As in working days or over five days?
I would say five days.
Okay. Because I would rather vote to pass the budget than to do the continuing resolution. I would like to say the budgets have passed through all three committees. Are you good with that?
But there are a few open issues. Will you restate what you'd like to do again, please?
BFJ's budget passed, so it's completely done correct. So was LNC's, so was HEW. All three budgets have passed through committees. So, we need the final number to vote on. Council's a hold to approve the budget.
Yes, sir. I can have those in five days. Can have those in five days.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell.
Representative Tiger, let me double check with each committee to make sure everything has passed. Everything, HEW's passed, correct?
Yes.
Jill, or Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Randolph? All has passed through your committees. I just wanted to double check and verify, so.
With that, I'd make a motion to postpone indefinitely. And we call an emergency session when we get the numbers from the Controller Office.
Motion on the floor is to postpone indefinitely. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Hicks. Any discussion? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to postpone indefinitely. Roll call vote please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
No.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
No.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
No.
Travis Scott?
No.
Speaker, you have ten in favor, four against.
Ten in favor, four against. That will be postponed indefinitely. NCA twenty-one, one-five-nine. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation creating a new chapter ten entitled Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority in MCNCA Title Seventeen Economic Development. Sponsors Joseph Hicks.
Figure motion to adopt.
Representative Hicks made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-five-nine. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Proctor. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-six-zero. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Internal Revenue Service Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program for the Benefit of the Office of the Secretary of the Nation and Commerce. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-six-zero. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one, one-six-one. A law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of matching funds for the Muskogee Creek Nation Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program for the Benefit of the Office of the Secretary of the Nation and Commerce. Sponsors Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one, one-six-one. Do I have second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one six two. A law of the Muscogee Creek Nation terminating the repayment agreement between the Muscogee Creek Nation and Twin Heels Indian Community. Sponsors James Jennings.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt. Six two.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Low, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks? Robert Huf?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one six three. A law of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of self-governance funds for the Muscogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority for the Benefit of the Office of the Secretary of the Nation and Commerce. Sponsors Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Hicks made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one six three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Proctor, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
James Jennings? Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman. Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. NCA twenty-one one six four. A law of the Muscogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Funds for the United States for the Climate Resilency Project at River Spirit Casino Resort, sponsors Patrick Freeman Jr.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Freeman made a motion to adopt NCA twenty-one one six four.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Patrick Freeman? Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. And that concludes the order of business. The next item on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business? We do have a presentation for our representatives that are leaving the council, so. I will ask Alicia to read the plaques and then when your name is called, come before the podium and, oh. You see the plaque, do you?
In recognition to the, of service to the Muscogee Creek Nation presented to Travis Scott for his contributions in serving as National Counsel of Fuske District Representative from two thousand six to two thousand eleven and two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one. In recognition of service to the Muscogee Creek Nation presented to Lucian Tiger the Third for his contributions in serving as National Counsel Tulsa District Representative from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-one and two sessions as Speaker. Session nineteen and session twentieth. In recognition of service to the Muscogee Creek Nation presented to Adam Jones III for his contributions in serving as National Counsel McIntosh District Representative from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-one. In recognition of service to the Muscogee Creek Nation presented to James Jennings for his contributions in serving as National Counsel Oatmogee District Representative from two thousand six to two thousand eleven and two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-one and one session as Sergeant of Arms for the twenty-first session.
Man, that was kind of tough. I'm glad she read that, but I guess as Speaker, I just want to say, gentlemen, I appreciate working with you. I've enjoyed my years and time on council with you. Done a great job. We can always agree, but we all work together and we stay together. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Speaker. Been an honor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Down to announcements. Is there any announcements?
Speaker, have an announcement, sir.
Representative Low.
Today's the Holiday Food Truck Meal at four P.M. in front of the Veterans Building, so any veterans, you and a spouse can have one meal. Limit is one hundred, so I doubt there are seconds. You never know. So, four P.M., be there at Veterans Building. What else, Speaker?
All right. Representative Low. Also is the First Annual Muscogee Riders Motorcycle Toy Run. I believe they're going to try to meet here or in their destination here. Two o'clock? Two o'clock. Come out and show your support for that as well. Any other announcements? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Representative Jennings.
Representative Jennings made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Representative Tiger. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This time, I'd like to ask Representative Jennings to do the benediction, please.
Let us pray. My grace, heaven and father, we come to you in prayer this morning asking for your continued guidance as we, council goes about their business for the nation. By the way, I ask that you'd be with our servicemen and women wherever they may be. Watch over them, be with them this holiday season as they are away from home. Bring them safely home. I ask that you'd be with those that are ill. By the way, I ask that you'd be with those that have lost loved ones in time of sadness and grief.